Good afternoon, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you and call to order our Middlesex County Council meeting for Tuesday, March the fourteenth, getting ahead of myself there. We acknowledge that the land we stand upon today is the traditional territory of the Atawandarin, Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, and Lenapepewak peoples, who have longstanding relationships to the land, water, and region of southwestern Ontario. The local First Nation communities of this area include Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames First Nation, and Muncie Delaware Nation. The Middlesex County building is on a land within the areas of Treaties 21 and 29, and the London Township Treaty 6. We value the significant contributions both in the past and the present of local and regional First Nations of Turtle Island. We acknowledge historic and ongoing injustices that Indigenous peoples endure in Canada, and we affirm our commitment to honoring Indigenous voices, nations, and cultures, and to moving forward in a spirit of reconciliation and respect. Many of us in this room had the pleasure and the honor of knowing Duncan McPhail. Duncan was the mayor of West Elgin and the past warden of Elgin County. Duncan passed away on the weekend, and to say it came as a shock is an understatement. Duncan was larger than life. If you knew him, you knew and experienced his generous, supportive, and positive personality. He always welcomed you with a smile and a big hug. While Duncan was an Elgin County councillor, he was a friend to Middlesex. Past Warden Mary Gay Wilkins shared many memories with me over the past few weeks when we talked about Duncan. It was Duncan who encouraged her to enter the political forum, and Mary Gay shared a story with me that shows his generous spirit. For years, he grew pumpkins, and he and his first wife got to know an owner of one of the Detroit Airport parking lots, one of those Park and Flies, and they developed a great friendship. And because of that, for years, before paperwork got too laborious, he would bring a truckload of pumpkins to the lot so that everyone, as they exited, received a free pumpkin. As Mary Gay said, he just had a big heart. Past Warden Curtis Smith shares memories of attending events with his wife Bridgette and Duncan and his wife Norma when they were both wardens in 2019. Curtis observes that at first glance, it seemed like it was an unlikely friendship, the well-seasoned warden from Elgin and Curtis, the young warden from Middlesex. But a friendship did develop, and the two endured and enjoyed their terms as warden together. Curtis's description of Duncan is the same as so many have shared: A fun, adventurous, community-oriented family man with a big personality and the gift of being a great storyteller. On Saturday night, I was watching the announcement on Sportsnet and CBC of the final four communities in the Craft Hockeyville campaign, and I was beyond excited when Wes Lorne was announced. I knew that it was going to be so much fun watching Duncan be the cheerleader for his community as I had been for mine. He would have loved that so, and I will certainly miss seeing Duncan having experiencing Duncan's humour, his support, and his wisdom. He served his community well, and his community is better for his service, and I like to think that I'm better for having known him. I know you all join me in sending our condolences to West Elgin, Elgin County, but most importantly, Norma and his family. Rest well, Duncan. You've earned it. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. We do have the agenda in front of us, and I need a mover and a seconder to approve the agenda as presented. Councillor Mayhew and Councillor Smybert. All in favour? And that's carried. Now, we've got a number of minutes in front of us, and the first minutes that we are going to consider, you want all these separate motions? Right, okay. So the first set of minutes that we're going to consider are the minutes from the February 4th, 2023 meeting of County Council and the Committee of the Whole, and of course, that's to approve the minutes as presented and that the recommendations made by the Committee of the Whole as set out in the minutes be adopted. So that's for February 14th. A mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Clark and Councillor Ropp. All in favour? And that's carried. And then we can combine, though it shows up in the agenda as three separate ones, we can combine them. So those, of course, are the minutes from the Education and Training Session for February 14th, the closed session meeting minutes for February 14th of County Council, and the closed meeting minutes of the Education and Training Session for February 14th. Unless anything has to be amended, I would ask for a mover and a seconder to approve all of those as presented. Councillor Grantham and Councillor Brennan. All in favour? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to new business. The first item in front of us is a report from our CAO, and that has to do with regards to land ambulance dispatch. You always are.
Warden, well, I'd like to start by just saying something similar to what you said about Duncan. And I know you captured it perfectly, but administratively, I just want to say something as well. I was talking to other CIOs this week about Duncan's passing, and something incredible came as a common denominator. Everybody talked about, you know, it's a challenge doing this role or a senior administrative role in municipal government, but just an incredibly supportive man. He was very, very supportive of CIOs across Ontario, and it came through in the conversations I had with other CIOs about just how impactful he was. So I know you're going to take things from him, but it's a little thing that all of us have too as CIOs. There's not one of them that wasn't impacted by a kind word from Duncan. I know it's a hard day for you. CAO X or CAO Y, I'm just thinking about you. Those are the kind of things Duncan did, and there's lots we can learn from that. He's just an incredible man we lost. So I just wanted to say that, Warden, about how great he was for all of us on staff. We have an unusual item in 581 about land ambulance dispatch. It's not something we've talked a lot about. We've talked a lot about land ambulance dispatch. We haven't talked a lot about dispatch consulting. And it's a little unusual item because we'd like to sole source this, and we'd like to go out and make sure that we get this done as quickly as possible. As many of you know around the table, we've been invited by the province to get this report done in as quickly as 90 days. It's something that the goal of getting land ambulance dispatch has been on our radar screen. I had hair like bangs back whenever we first tried to get this, so it's a long time we've been trying to get this. And to have a premier sit in front of the warden and I and say, "In the next 90 days, can you get me a report on this?" is really, really an important step for this county. And so we want to move as quickly as possible. We've come to the conclusion that we've found the right consultant, and our bylaws allow us to go away from an RFP in circumstances where there is to do a sole source in a situation like this. And so that's what we're asking for today is that we the specific motion that is before you, but then you can see the pricing as well, that we approve and move forward, and that's why it's before you is because it is a little out of the ordinary. What we would normally do in this circumstance is we would go and get our multiple people bid, but this is a very specialized item and a very time-sensitive item. Time-sensitive is probably, the both of these are big factors. So we're proud to present this to you, and if there's any questions you have, we'd be glad to answer them.
Great. Thanks for that, Bill. Any questions on the recommendation in front of you? Councillor DeVeet?
Thank you, three Warden to Bill. Given the time sensitivity of this contract, are you certain that they can receive the work and complete it in the time that?
Great question. Yeah, actually, this company, because, so let me just further explain. I think there are other people. If I go to any consultant firm and say, "Can you do X or Y?", doesn't matter what the topic is, they're going to say, "Yes, I can." In this particular case, we have a company that has just tremendous, no one else that we can find has actually done the actually done the work that we're asking to do. And so this company is very busy because they're an international and a North American-wide company. And so we did check with them because that was our biggest concern as well. I don't know that they're going to be able to meet our 90-days timeline, but they're going to be able to take on this work and do it in a timely way, and we're certainly going to strive to meet the premier's direction on this.
Any other questions from council? Okay, then you do have the motion, recommended motion in front of you. If I could get a mover and a seconder for that, please. Councillor Maguire and Councillor DeVeet. All in favour? That's carried. Okay, continuing on with MLPS discussions at this point, I'm going to ask Adam Bennett, our Deputy Commander, Commander Deputy Chief. I never know what the title is of the day, but anyways, Adam's going to present the MLPS 2023 Response Time Performance Plan for us. Adam?
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. Each year, Middlesex London Paramedic Service is required to report to the Ministry of Health on Response Time Performance. The targets for response time performance are set by Middlesex County Council, and they can be changed or updated as needed. Middlesex London Paramedic Service is required to report performance in relation to these targets for the 2022 year by March 31st. There are several pressures that continue to challenge response times, including offload delays, increasing call volume. Those pressures specifically remove responding ambulances from the 911 system and require responding ambulances to travel greater distances. Requirements for additional protective equipment when responding to cardiac arrests, those remain in place. These were put into place to protect paramedics during COVID-19. Middlesex London Paramedic Service also does not control dispatch, which is the entry point for the 911 calls, and many calls are still currently being over-trialed, which results in additional pressures. In light of all of this, though, however, for the 2022 year, Middlesex London Paramedic Service has met all targets. And the recommendation before you is that Middlesex London Paramedic Service Response Time results be received for information, and that County Council direct the Chief of Middlesex London Paramedic Service to submit the annual performance report to the Ministry of Health no later than March 31st of this year.
Okay, thanks for that, Adam. Questions for Adam? Councillor Grantham?
Yeah, through you to Adam. I do have one question. Thank you for the report. I am concerned about the response time on sudden cardiac events. I did know, I believe it was 2021 that we decreased the target, but yet we still struggled to meet the target, and I do understand the outside pressures, but not really a question, but if you want to comment on that, what we could do to mitigate, to bring that up.
Absolutely. Council's been very active in working towards improving offload delays, improving the resources that are available, and similar to CAO Rayburn has commented, controlling dispatch will also help increase those response times. That is the one response time that's preset by the province and the amount of time that it takes to respond. Those additional pressures that we are experiencing are what help, or what are some of the drivers behind why it takes longer to get to a particular call? The fewer resources available in the system, the longer they have to drive to get to those particular scenes.
Did you follow up? Counsel, okay. Any other questions for Adam, what's been presented? Councillor Smybert?
Yes, to the Deputy Chief. So I was just curious, so what happens when you're not compliant? Is there any follow-up by the province, or? That's just a question. I wasn't sure what the follow-up was.
The response time, or the province will analyze and will review the response time targets. The follow-up is that when we would re-present to council, we would analyze exactly what is that. As the councillor has mentioned, that what exactly is the driving factors behind that? But at this moment, there's no concerns for that for us.
Adam Warren, just for greater clarity on Colin's question. Adam, I'm just wondering if you can comment. There's a bit of a tipping point, though, whenever we have offload delays, that's an impact that's not necessarily seen as much in the urban environment as it is in the rural environment that has an impact as well, and that is if we get to the point where offload delays are requiring us to call vehicles from other systems, that increased travel time compared to if we could drop someone off in 30 minutes and return to our rural, you know, bases earlier, as opposed to having the travel time where someone has to rotate in from another county. Do you just want to comment on that a bit, Adam? And that's a hidden impact that's not often seen in our response times.
Absolutely, that, and that is a tremendous impact and a tremendous point to bring forward. As our call volumes increase, as offload delays are pulling ambulances out of the 911 system to sit in the hallways, we're pulling additional resources from outerlying areas, and that starts in concentric circles when we look at seamless dispatching. So we have county vehicles will be pulled into where it's busier in the city centers. Other municipalities will be pulled into our municipalities to help support some of those calls as well. So we have those additional pressures that come in towards responding to all of our Code Four calls, including those cardiac arrests.
So we've got to remember that these are averages, but on, like, that's the really scary part, that these are averages, and that whenever we start pulling, when we hit that tipping point where we're pulling from other areas, that travel distance and that travel time to cover off our areas and our community is increased dramatically. So offload delays, you asked a question, you know, what can happen? Offload delays going to a steady state or dropping would be just a miracle for us in terms of response times, considering the hockey stick impact we've had in the graphs of offload delays going forward. It's probably the number one factor, I would say, in terms of our response times when we have to sit in the emergency room for that long.
Okay, any other questions for Adam? Councillor Maguire?
Thank you, Madam Warden. My question, I just need this in front of me. My question is on page, looking at your report, page three of your report. I just want to look at that little chart. So January 1st, 22, December 31st, 22. So we're talking about, we'll just take, if you can, sir, sudden cardiac arrests. So percent achieved target. So that is that we want to achieve 60% compliance? Is that what that terminology is referring to?
That is correct.
And then the number of calls met, that met the response time. So we had 167 of 405 calls met that. Is that right? So 167 did not meet. Okay, so it's actually 167 of 405 calls did not meet. Okay, that's fine. That's kind of what I was thinking. I was just misreading the title perhaps. Thank you.
Okay, just so just to that point, that then there's a typo in the chart because the typo says number of calls that met that response time. So so that column is calls that did not. Okay, perfect. All right, any other questions or clarifications? Right, then you have the motion in front of you. If I can get a mover and a seconder for that, please. Councillor Smybert and Councillor Maguire. All in favour? And that's carried. Thanks very much, Adam. Okay, Chris, you're up. 911 Central Emergency Reporting Bureau. And this is with regards to a contract that we have with the London Police Department.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warren. Another component of emergency response here. So for a number of decades, I would say that the county has contracted with London Police Services Board for 911. The Central Emergency Reporting Bureau and 911 calls. So someone calls 911. This is the group that would take that call and ask what the nature of the emergency is, and then transfer that call to the appropriate fire, police, or EMS. We've had this contract in place for, as I said, many years, and we received notice that the current funding formula they use to charge out for the service has changed dramatically in that we normally would renew this contract for a number of years, and they've only offered us a one-year extension at the current rate. So we're going to be sitting down with them in the very near future to look at what the costs might be moving forward and discuss options about how to manage that cost. Again, this wouldn't be a budgetary impact this year, but with the renewal coming in next March, we want to get on this sooner than later to find out what the impacts might be, and we'll be back to council with an additional report about how we're going to handle this part of our response for emergencies. So just my recommendation is we renew the agreement for another year, and we'll get into the negotiations with the London Police Services Board as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you for that update, Chris. Questions or clarifications on this? Councillor DeVeet?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Chris. Given our previous conversation about new dispatches, is there any way that we can leverage a new system that we have so that we can manage everything in one place, or is there some legal or systemic reason, or something that prohibits us from even talking about it? I don't know anything about it. I thought if you could just enlighten me. Thank you.
Yeah, through the Warden and Councillor DeVeet, because we have one phone number, anyone can call in this province to get emergency response, which is 911. Some agency has to pick up that phone and decide where those calls should be routed. If we had a system where someone called 912 for ambulance, 913 for fire, for example, then we could talk about internalizing some of those processes. But because we have to figure out how to take those calls from one central phone number and push it out into an area and into different response areas, for example, we have a number of fire, we have fire dispatch in Strathroyd and fire dispatch in London. We have ambulance dispatch, and then we have OPP, Strathryc Care Doc, Police, London Police. So it's essentially a way for a resident or anyone who has needs emergency response to call one number, and then that person, those group of people will dispatch that out to the right agency to make the response. It's challenging unless we set up a whole separate agency to do that work. There are other agencies in the province that do that. Again, we've had very good service with London Police Services Board, and it's, you know, regional perspective on this makes sense for us to continue with them if possible. But again, we really have to get into the negotiation to see where they're going to go. Obviously, as we've heard from our own MLPS reports, the call volumes have gone up across the board. So they're just having the same struggles that we've seen with regards to having those calls dispatched, as we're seeing trying to respond to those calls.
Thanks. Any other questions for Chris on this? Then you've got the motion in front of you, and I would ask for a mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Grantham and Councillor Clark. All in favour? And that's carried. Next item up is with regards to the appointment to the Middlesex London Food Policy Council. This is a recommendation from me, and I want to thank Councillor Smybert for agreeing to being voluntold. Well, I do like food. But yeah, exactly. This has been a position that we've been able to work through with the health unit in the past, but for a variety of reasons, we're going to take on the representation ourselves, and so Councillor Smybert has agreed to being asked, and I would ask for, I'm happy to answer any questions on it, and if there aren't any, then I would ask for a mover and a seconder. Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Warden. My question is, I don't, not that we need to go through the whole roster of who's on that committee, but I see that there's a bit of an economic development component. So I just wondered if Kara Finn was on that committee as well.
Kara, did you want to tackle that one?
Through you, Warden, to the councillor. I am not currently sitting on that committee. I did sit on the Steering Committee for the Food Policy Council and subsequently on the committee for several years. We did have the appointment of Ben Chance, who's our former Economic Development Officer, on that for the last year. He subsequently has left his position. We have just done a new hire, so it is expected that once Sean Columbus, our new Economic Development Officer, is up to speed, we will have him serve that committee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I would ask for a mover and a seconder for the motion in front of you. Councillor McMillan and Councillor Brennan. All in favour? And that's carried. Thank you very much. And again, thanks, Michelle. Okay, Ryan. Ryan Hillinger, the tender for glass beads.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to council. We had to re-tender our glass beads this year. We did previously have a three-year contract with them, but due to COVID and increased prices, we had to cancel that contract because they couldn't meet the supply for the price quoted, and we re-tendered for a one-year contract with other surrounding municipalities. The county portion of the contract is $41,062.50 through Optra Minerals. They were the company that had to cancel the contract, but all the supply they have done to us so far has been good. So we recommend that they, that we award the tender to them for the amount of $41,062.50.
Thank you, Ryan. Questions on this one? Okay, I'm going to mover in a seconder for the recommended motion in front of you. Councillor Grantham and Councillor Smybert. All in favour? And that's carried. Okay, you've got another one, Ryan. Thank you for that. Any questions on this? Councillor Ropp?
Yeah, thank you, through the Warden to Ryan. Will this do anything for FragMities?
This does not do anything for FragMities.
Thank you.
That every year, Councillor Ropp. Any other questions on this? And then can I get a mover and a seconder for this in front of you? Councillor Mayhew and Councillor Clark. All in favour? And that one is carried. Okay, Ryan?
Next, we have Cold and Place Recycling. I believe that's the right one. The Cold and Place Recycling is for two of our roads that we'll be reconstructing this year or resurfacing this year. There were three bids. LaViss was the low bid on this tender. The low bid came in at $2,119,230. LaViss obviously has worked with us the past number of years, and we have never had any issues with their work. We recommend that the tender of $21,119,230 be accepted.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions on this tender? Councillor Ropp?
Just to comment to it, and I think I've commented on it before, but there's a lot of new councillors, and this is a great program that we do on the roads, and I think it's helped our roads a lot.
I would agree with that, Councillor Ropp, and I don't know, maybe just for the new councillors, maybe just a reader's digest of what the Cold and Place asphalt program is?
Sure. Basically, the Cold and Place is a recycling technique used to rehabilitate our roads. It's especially good when there's a lot of cracking in the roads. What it does is we mill down. Usually, we need about five inches of asphalt. They mill down four of the inches of the asphalt, run it through a pug mill in their operation, add some more AC to it, the black stuff that makes everything sticky, and put it back down on the road. What this does is it alleviates the cracks that would push up through if we had just merely put another lift of asphalt on. So it basically lengthens the life of the road.
Thank you for that, Ryan. Any other comments or questions? If not, then I'd ask for a mover and a seconder for this tender recommendation. Councillor Maguire and Councillor Mayhew. All in favour? And that's carried. Okay, this is now the tender for concrete curb and gutter.
We had six bids this year, which is actually high for us for curb and gutter. The low bid was Roboc Contracting at $258,620.50. The, we've worked with Roboc for the past number of years, and they've always exceeded the work. So the, all this work is actually being done on our resurfacing roads, and we recommend that Roboc And we recommend that Roboc be awarded the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Thanks, Ryan. Questions on this one? Was, when you said that you, you received six. For this and that surprised you. Is the dollar amount in keeping with what you thought it was going to be? Or did that come in as a surprise as well?
No, actually, the, the dollar amount came in right, right on estimates for this. We were very happy with it. Just to give you a little idea of, of the range, this was the lowest at two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Our highest was seven hundred and fifty. That, that definitely would have been outside our estimates.
I would say so. Okay, thanks for that, Ryan. If there's no questions, then I'd ask for a mover and a second or to accept this tender recommendation. Counselor Smibert and Counselor Devit. All in favor. And this is carried. And then this one is the tender for supply and installation of sub drains.
We have two roads that will be receiving sub drains with our construction program this year, County Route twenty-four and eighty-one. The lowest bid was ninety-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and was submitted by Vanbury Drainage. We have worked with Vanbury in the past and they are, they do fine work. We recommend that the bid amount of ninety-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five be accepted.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions on this one? Then I'd ask for a mover in a second or for the recommendation in front of you, Counselor Clark and Counselor Mayhew. All in favor. And that's carried. The next one up is the tender for hot mix asphalt.
So this is part A of two tenders. This is the northwest portion of the county. We received four bids, GIP, which is formerly Cocoa Paving, was the low bidder on this contract price of five million three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We've worked with them in the past. Last year they were GIP and they were Cocoa to that previously. We recommend that the amount of five million three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars be accepted.
Thanks, Ryan. Questions on this one? Then a mover and a second or for this recommendation, please. Counselor Rock and Counselor Grantham. All in favor. And that's carried. And this now is the tender for hot mix, part B.
Yep, this should be the last one, I hope. So this is for the east side of the county. This is won by JR Excavating. They were formerly Walmsley Brothers. For an amount of one million nine hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. We have worked with them in the, in the form of Walmsley Brothers in the past. So we do believe that their work will, will meet all county expectations and it's recommended that JR be awarded the amount of one million nine hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Thanks, Ryan. Questions on this one? Comments? Okay, then a mover and a second or for the recommended motion in front of you, Counselor Brennan and Counselor Smibert. All in favor. And that's carried. And you are correct, Ryan. That was the last one. Thank you very much. I'm okay. This one, Chief Roberts, a report on our dedicated offload. Delayers program and discussion about the contract.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to counsel. So this is a report that we bring to council every year. The report, I will admit, is late and it is seeking approval to execute an agreement with London Health Sciences. Center and the County of Middlesex, Middlesex Line and Paramedic Services. For the dedicated offload nurse funding and the, your council will note as part of the package, we received a letter in December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Announcing additional funds from our annual allocation, which in the past had been six hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and forty-eight. Which allowed for a nurse to be staffed at the Victoria Campus and the university campus sixteen hours a day, seven days a week. This year, the Province of Ontario provided additional funds of three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine eighty-two. Which allowed us to staff that nursing position at each site for up to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So. That is improved staffing. The announcement itself was embargoed until recently. So that's why this is coming to you so late. But what we're asking for is council approve the execution of an agreement with London Health Sciences. For the period of April first, twenty-twenty-two to March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And then we'll come back to you in twenty-twenty-three, hopefully with the, the upcoming year for this funding envelope. So. Warden, happy to take any questions your council may have. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Chief, questions? Counselor Brennan?
In the past, and I think I've asked this question before, chief. Are there times when the hospital gets short-staffed and they pull that nurse? Out of that position into the hospital to fill a role in the hospital? When needed, does that still happen or is this person there twenty-four seven?
Thank you, through you, Warden, to Counselor Brennan. So it's a great question. In the past, we have had that challenge. I will tell you that in the last year, year and a half, we've been working very closely with London Health Sciences, especially Deputy Chief Bennett. They have actually preserved this position as a priority position, even when there are short nurses within the emerged department. This is one of the last positions to not be staffed. And I would tell you that most times it is staffed. Even when other areas of the department may not be fully staffed. So. LHSC has gone a long way to, to addressing this issue and prioritizing this funding envelope and this position itself.
Counselor Devit?
That was essentially my question was worded a little bit differently and you've almost answered it. Would you say it's over ninety percent? I was wondering what percentage of the time is better than ninety?
I definitely say it's, I'm looking at my deputy chief, definitely over ninety percent. It's very rare nowadays that we're finding out that this position is not staffed. And like I said, they're putting every effort into ensuring that this is a priority for them.
And no one wants to, you know, make comments about leadership in other sectors, but the leadership change at LHSC. Has been a real driver in. Acknowledging the importance of this position. And if we can keep this position staffed, then it's one small step in, in making changes with offload delays. So I would agree with what certainly the communication that the chief has had with us at the authority board level. And the discussions he and I have had that, you know, LHSC is doing their part.
Thank you. That's really encouraging.
Any other questions or comments on this report? Okay, then I would ask for a mover and a second or for the recommended motion in front of you, Counselor Brennan and Counselor Devit. All in favor. And that's carried. Any inquiries? Any notices of motion? Counselor, comments? Did you have something? Oh, yeah. Okay, yes. Before I give it to Counselor Devit, I might just make one counselor comment. And I'm going to maybe steal from Counselor Grantham and, and Counselor McGuire is to congratulate your resident. Now I can't even remember his name. The skip, the teacher from St., that teaches at. Sir Arthur Voden in St. Thomas. I think his last name is Hettle.
Jake Higgins.
Oh, Jake Higgins. Congratulate him on a great briar. Certainly there was a lot of excitement when he was on the ice and his students were thrilled to have him there. And I think he represented Strathroy and of course Middlesex very well. Okay, Counselor Devit?
Thank you, Warden. To, to address to members of council. You'll see item eight A is a call to the provincial government to end homelessness in Ontario. And as you all know, I, I think you all know, I'm on the board of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. This is coming from AMO and I'm hoping that you will see fit to support this call for the government. I, if at all possible, I would also appreciate your support at your municipal level. We've had lots of reports from Cindy about how creatively money is used to help homeless people in the county. And we all know that we have a situation we're funding will cease at the end of March. We're talking about a young woman with three children as an example. I think we, it, it's fair to ask for some concrete action and support of all of our municipalities and the people who are. Trying not to live on the streets in our communities. So. Do I have to read the resolution? No, okay. It's there before you and. Any, any support that you can garner amongst your counselors and here it was, is deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Devit. I just will say for the benefit of those that are watching online. That the resolution is fairly lengthy and it can be found on our website on the agenda, but it is. As I say, it's fairly lengthy and we've all had time to review it. Counselor Grantham?
Yeah, thank you, Warden. I'd like to thank Counselor Devit for bringing this motion forward. Thank you very much. Because as we all know in our communities. We represent small rural communities. And to think that small rural communities like we all live in are impacted by homelessness, I think this is well needed. And I will certainly support this motion when it comes forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so the resolution in front of you and I'm going to say that Counselor Devit is moving it. I would ask for a second or please. Counselor Mayhew. All in favor. And that is carried. And I would encourage you to go back to your local municipalities if you haven't already and pass the motions at the local level as well. A motion, a mover and a second or to move into the committee of the whole, please. Counselor Smibert. And a second or Counselor Devit. All in favor. And that's carried. Okay, so first up, we have a delegation and it always makes me very happy to be able to have a delegation in person. So I would ask our friends from the committee to establish a Middlesex County Archives to make their way down to the presenter's desk. I think that you've all been briefed on how to use the microphones, but as I say, it's great to have a delegation in person. And I'm pleased to welcome Carol Small, the chair, and I'll turn it over to you, Carol.
It worked. Good afternoon, Warden Burkhart, Justin, Deputy Warden Devit, counselors and administrators. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Carol Small and I'm Chair of the Committee to Establish a Middlesex Centre Archives. I have with me today, members of our committee. This is a renowned researcher, Dr. David Elliott and archivist Krista Taylor. She is one of two archivists on our committee. We also have committee members and supporters in the gallery and watching directly. Next, virtually, next slide, please. We have found that there seems to be some confusion about the roles of these three entities. So I've asked. Archivist Krista to clarify.
Libraries, museums, archive and archives preserve our human experiences. You know, each does something different, but what is it? A library consists of published materials such as books and may have several copies of the same title. Libraries are organized by subject and offers public access and lending. In contrast, an archives collects original, often unpublished items unique to an area. Archival collections are sorted by creator. While the material is often available for research, the collection is not signed out to the public. A museum is comprised of three D objects known as artifacts. Curators strive to have the best possible example of an item, especially if it will be on display. The ownership of the item is often the reason the item fits the collecting mandate. This is unlike in archives where the items are often, often two-dimensional and the information is more significant than the condition. Usually because there is only one example. Who created the information is more important than the ownership. Next slide, please.
Let these words resonate. In Middlesex County, we are but a half a generation away from losing our social cultural history. Too many documents have already been lost to the dumpster, fires, floods, molds, insects and rodents. And as my generation leaves this world. History will repeat itself and the biggest recipient, recipient of historical documents will be the dumpster. Aging volunteers and volunteer burnout pose real problems. Archives and historical facilities will close. That means their documents have a real possibility of ending up on your doorstep. Next slide, please. Climate change. It's happening here in Middlesex County. We live in tornado alley. We have flood plains. We do have droughts. That cause grass fires, hayfields to burn and wheat fields to burn. And those destroy everything in their paths. We have rail lines and two four-hundred series highways that run through Middlesex County. Disasters are just around the corner. Next slide, please. CEMCA supports Middlesex County's initiative to archive. The born digital records as well as to digitize community records of enduring historical value. But digitization alone will not meet the heritage preservation needs of Middlesex County. Archivist Krista will speak about digitizing records. She has a wealth of experience in this area.
Digitization is encouraged in the heritage field because it provides access and is an ideal way for researchers to view documents in person and remotely. Case in point, the March store collection I recently digitized. The collection was saved from an actual burn pile and is a treasure in the MCA collection. The collection includes store and mill ledgers dating to the eighteen seventies. This collection is locally, provincially and nationally significant. The contents are ideal for researchers interested in cold stream. Genealogy, the Society of Friends or Quakers and historians interested in the socioeconomic history of rural Victorian Ontario. The information in these ledgers is rare and invaluable. The ledgers needed to be digitized because of their condition. They are brittle, rodent chewed, some are water damaged and all are a victim of age. Digitization is the only way these ledgers may be available for research. With two grants, we secured funding for the work and the specialized scanner. Scanning was completed guided by industry standards for archival digitization and preservation. Once and done, that's how we want to do it because excessive exposure to light and continuous handling is detrimental to archival documents. Ideally, we never want to scan these documents again. Will we destroy the originals now that they're scanned? No, because we cannot depend on technology to be the end-all for preserving our heritage documents. This has proven disastrous and examples could be easily cited. As well, should standards change, we may need to rescand. Next slide, please.
Good afternoon. I've been a professor of history and now I occasionally work as a historical contractor gathering evidence. For legal teams in the settling of estates and land title disputes. I must tell you that Middlesex County is one of the most difficult places to research. Because of the lack of a county archives. Why does this matter to you as private citizens? The state of archival documents belonging to Middlesex County. Has direct implications for research on land titles, native land claims and estate questions. Remember, your land is your biggest investment. Middlesex County records, including legal records, are scattered. In Ottawa, Toronto, at Western University, in the London Room. Local surrounding county archives, various small historical societies in Middlesex County. And in private collections under beds and ingregis. The documentation of Middlesex County's history is incoherent, unorganized and piecemeal at best. We need to have our legal documents here so that local legal teams have familiarity with them. We cannot do without a county archives just from a legal standpoint. We cannot do without a county archives just from a legal standpoint. Not only are historical municipal documents in danger of being lost because of inadequate storage, but there is an accessibility problem. Often, these public and private documents are key to solving tricky legal and ancestral quest questions. Middlesex County is missing out on tourism revenue because genealogy is big business. Researchers both here and from afar are prepared to to come to a archives if we have one in our county. The resulting loss of tourism has a detrimental economic impact on Middlesex County. It's time to convert the assets of Middlesex County's rich history into an economic boom by organizing these documents in one place within Middlesex County.
Next slide, please. Before we speak to the recommendations, some clarifications are required. It has been said that this committee has asked council for a building with a high price tag. It seems some information has been taken out of context. At the September 28th, 2021 County Council meeting, this committee gave background information about archives in general with facts gathered from local surrounding archives as examples. At that meeting, two recommendations were put forth. One, that County Council support the establishment of a Millsack County Archives and for Council to County Council to form an advisory committee with CEMCA as a partner to study all aspects of the archives issue. In all our presentations or in talking with residents, we are adamantly clear that it's ultimately council's decision to work out the details of an archives. Now, in conclusion, we have three recommendations. Our first recommendation speaks to the digitization project. We want to work in partnership with you to formulate a plan to discover what is in the community to prioritize records and how best to repair, digitize and catalog them for future use. Our second recommendation speaks to establishing a Millsack County Archives because the situation is becoming dire. Although dire is not a short term goal and will not come to fruition in the lifetime of this council. No, no council can make a decision based on a 10 minute presentation, no matter how good we are. Thus, CEMCA is recommending that a partnership committee be established to gather detailed information about an archives, assess the information from all angles and in an informed, open and unbiased manner, make a decision that can then be taken to council. CEMCA desires to be a member of that committee because we do have expertise to offer. There are also other groups within the county who can offer expertise, archivists, researchers, lawyers, municipal clerks, historians, tourist, the tourist industry, economic development, etc. This is the end of our formal presentation. Thank you for your attention and interest. It does take political will to accomplish projects. And this one is a highly important project. We would be pleased to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Hey, thank you very much for that presentation. I now look to my colleagues for any questions or comments at this time. Uh, Counselor Mayhew.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. I think there is an opinion out there that is the responsibility of archiving is sometimes regarded on a local level. And as Mayor of Southwest Middlesex, you know, we're very fortunate to have a very aggressive and well-run historical society. We extracted the land records out of the University of Western Ontario. And we brought them home and they landed in the same building from which they came in the former West Middlesex Registry Office. And with that, with that, we hear this that it's a local responsibility. Uh, how do you how do you react to that? Uh, are we the odd case in Southwest Middlesex or the unusual case? That we've taken the initiative to archive many of the land registry records. And you envision it going beyond a local level to a county level. How would you address that?
Through you, Ward Burkhart-Jessen, to Counselor Mayhew. Millsack County is the odd county out. Look around. There are county archives in all the other counties. Yes, I recognize your land record books. I've used them when the CAO of Millsack Center had a question. I did not rely on land.ca. I went down and looked at the original records because I wanted to see them. Digitization is not always the answer. A county archives? Um, for example, we had to uh. I am Chair of the Millsack Center Archives and we have a lot of records that we've accumulated over 10 years that we've been in operation. I can think of two specific specific cases where we had a lady start out in Dorchester. They sent her to Thorndale. Library in Thorndale, sent her to Arva. Arva sent her to Coldstream to the township, the municipal offices there. It's closing time on Wednesday at one o'clock at the archives. We get a call to say this lady's here. Can we send her down? We volunteers stayed and got her the information that we had. But unfortunately, we had to send her on to Strathroy. And she spent the whole day, most of the time on the road because Millsack County is not a small county. Shortly, a short time ago, we had another person come in from Eastern Ontario. Looks at the our website, sees Millsack Center automatically. And I know the people from Millsack Center can tell you this. They don't see Millsack Center, they see Millsack County and they think they're coming to a county archives. You have a letter in your uh package we sent from a researcher from Scotland. Researches families from the County Sutherland in Northern Scotland. We got an email to say, do you have the records? We've discovered some of these people. And actually in Keradoc, down to the former Keradoc, Strathrock, Keradoc. And we had to say, no, we don't have those records. We may have some information, but no, and Millsack County doesn't have an archives. But you wanted to go to the Huron County because you have people there. They've got a county record archives. Those are the kinds of things we're facing. Not only that, we talked about burnout and volunteer. Uh, our aging volunteers. I'm collecting data right now for our annual meeting for the Millsack Center Archives. I'm up over 4,000 hours and not all the volunteers have got their hours in. And that's just for last year and two months of those we were closed. So I hope I've answered some of your questions.
Thank you, Madam Warden and Carol. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor McGuire?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I will say that I have a lot of interest in this project and I have since it first appeared in any of our correspondence. I had the pleasure speaking with Carol and she was uh, very informative and I'm sorry, I meant to get out to see you and and we had that conversation. It will happen. I I think there is definitely something that this is a good area for us to explore. I have a number of questions. Um, and I'm not sure whether uh, this group would be able to bring a further information back to us. I'm curious about how many other of the of the counties are doing this and what that looks like, how each one is doing it and if Middlesex County was to undertake this, again, what are we looking at? I can't picture that in my mind, so I'm trying to get somebody to draw me a picture uh, with words as to what does Huron County look like and what does Oxford look like? And is this what the general provincial group? I don't know if there's a provincial group. Is this what they want? Is it done at the county level? Because I don't, I wouldn't prefer to do it at the county level only to find out we should have done it at the local level. I did have the opportunity to speak to the Greater Sudbury region uh, around Christmas time, looking for some archival information. I know they have it. They were able to provide information to me. I was able to get it over to a family uh, that was desperately looking for some stuff and it made an enormous impact on the family. So I think this is really interesting stuff. I have a lot of questions um, and would be looking for some more information and I I, Madam Warden, I'm not quite sure how we would word that or direct it, but uh, I'll leave it to say that I find this very interesting and could be worth exploring further.
I guess my question to you, Counselor McGuire, is where are you looking for the information from? Are you looking at it to to come from volunteer groups that are already doing the work? Or are you looking for staff to put in time to do the research on that?
Right. At this time, I would like to see additional information brought back from this committee because I think you're well versed in probably answering my questions. And and then to see where that conversation flows from there. So that that would be my request of 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 the group presenting.
Counselor Smibert?
Yes, thank you, Warden. I I think I'm I'm in the same mindset as Counselor McGuire in terms of I can see the value of an archives, absolutely, in Middlesex County. What that looks like, I don't know. Right? And I and I thank the committee for bringing forward this information. It's been very helpful for me. Um, in Tem Centre, I think we're underserviced in terms of this this type of service. We've been getting lots of emails from people who've indicated that they would really like to see um, a formal archives, you know, whether it's in Tem Centre or in in Millsack County. So I I value it. Um, I'm just not sure how we get from where we are today to I think what we should be looking at. But that's the question for me is what does this look like? And so um, I'm not sure if it's a combination of getting more information from the archives, but also staff as well in terms of what other counties have done, what what funding is available. And there's just a lot of questions for me. Um, I'm just looking for some information and some answers.
Okay, I guess I would go back to Carol. Um, would you be able to put some more information to answer some of the questions that Counselor McGuire, Counselor Smibert have um, put forth?
We would be happy to. In fact, that's one of the reasons that we put forward the recommendation to form a partnership committee. Until COVID hit, when we first got together again with this committee, one of our goals was to take counselors on trips to visit uh, various archives, Lampton County, Huron County, Perth, Stratford, Oxford County, Wellington, Gray and Bruce, all have excellent, Dufferin, excellent archives, Simcoe. We're the person, and I think you've seen our design map that shows that we're the one without. But we'd be happy to. Uh, Krista, did you have anything you'd like to add? No.
Counselor Mayhew?
Uh, thank you again, Madam Warden. Uh, Carol, I think information like, what do you see as the square foot footprint of this thing? Uh, what about the capital expenditures? What type of fixturing do you need? Uh, we know you need humidity control and temperature control. That goes without saying. And what about staffing? Who's going to staff those archives? So you know, the amount of square footage, uh, the ideal location of this, uh, who's going to staff it? Who's going to pay for that staff? Uh, the insured value of that particular asset. Like those are some of the business parameters that would be helpful in knowing and that could be gleaned probably by just a uh, anecdote of the existing archives from other areas, uh, could probably access that information for you.
We did through you, Warden Burkhart-Jessen to Counselor. We did present that information in 2021, gleaned from uh, local archives. We presented it as examples. That's why we would like to see an advisory committee or a partnership committee established. So the whole gamut of this can be examined, looked at every which way, up, down, sideways and get all the information. Uh, presently, uh, people have talked about having a business plan. We've reached out to Ivy School of Business and also to Fanchop Pioneer Village Business. And Fanchop College, sorry. To see if some of their students might be interested, won't be this year, but maybe another year to come up with a business plan, that type of thing. And certainly other archives, Elgin, Lampton, Huron, all the ones I've listed certainly have their costs. Interestingly enough, 2000, in 2019, the Canadian government did a study to find out the value of archives in Canada, how much revenue it generated. That in $2,019 was $69 for every person in Middlesex County with a population in 2019, that would have generated $4.5 million. So you're talking big dollars.
Is that, sorry, Carol, is that was was that numbers, like was that pure profit or that was just revenue generated?
Revenue for expenses. Yeah, revenue generated. And I think I sent an information sheet out on that. If you dig through your pile of information.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Rob?
Uh, thank you. Through to the Warden. I I think some of the questions we're asking in fairness to Counselor Mayhew is maybe ahead of the game and if there's an interest at council to form a committee, I think that would be the first step to get some of the answers and to work with some of these questions, if that's what council feels.
Yes, I would look to my colleagues um, on what Counselor Rob's put forward. Counselor McGuire?
So I think the conversation is basically circled back to my initial conversation. Um, I see your your comments, Counselor Rob is. I I'm I'm looking for a little bit more high level. What does it look like in Oxford, Huron, Elgin? So I can picture it. So I can then make the next comment. Which I think is where the other counselor, Rob is is and and then I think that would then lead over to, depending on those circumstances, we could be a a year out or we could be eight months out to answering what does a business plan look like as things get driven ahead? Right now, I'm having just a hard time grasping what it looks like. I need a picture. Uh, very, very high level.
Um, so I would go back to the committee. Is there a way that you can present that so that council has more information? And then have a council would then have a further discussion as to next steps?
If through you, Madam Warden, if council's interested, we will try to set up a tour of a couple of archives within our area, whether it's Elgin, Lampton, short distance, maybe over one day, two days. Council's interested, we'll work with you and make that happen. And don't forget to come out to our Millsack Center.
I was going to put the plug in.
Oh, I knew you'd be reading our mind.
Dr. Elliott, did you have a comment? I saw your hand up.
Lampton County's Archives is one of the state of the art ones in in Ontario and I use it often. It's part of the municipal office complex there in Wyoming. And the county library is in part of the Annex Building and the County Archives is in the other part. And the uh county archives is in the other part, and they handle all the municipal records and also the uh. Publicly generated records. They have the land title books. They have the land instruments. They have. Uh newspapers for Lampton County. They have um. The birth, death and marriage certificates for Ontario. And you can do one stop research there. And the staff are employed by the county. They charge user fees. For people coming in to do research. And um. It's a good place to have a look.
Okay, so I think um based on what we've said, we're going to wait for some more information, perhaps a a tour or. Direction um for us to find out more information on different. Archives, and then I think then there'll be a further discussion at the council level. Did I see your hand up, councillor Smibert? No, okay. Um so we'll we'll leave that in your corner right now. But I suspect that there will be more conversation to be had, okay? And I will put in a plug for the tenth anniversary of the Middlesex Centre um Archives on Saturday, April the first. And I believe the formal uh portion gets underway at one o'clock. And for anybody that doesn't know where it is, it isn't the Delaware uh Community Centre. And um it would be a good opportunity for you if if your schedule allows to get out. See the work that the Middlesex County Archives does. As Carol said, they are a group of volunteers. Um that does incredible work uh for um for their their Middlesex Centre ar- archives. They're a passionate group and you'll be able to see um exactly what uh they're talking about. So mover and a second or to accept the presentation from the archive of Middlesex County Archives presentation for information. Councillor Maguire and councillor McMillan. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much.
Uh could I correct one thing, Madam Mard? We in Middlesex Centre do have a professional archivist. So all our documents are properly archived in the proper manner and and filed and everything that way.
And and further to that, actually, April first is our heritage fair, so it will comprise of of groups and exhibitors from across the county. And the area and it's happening from ten to four. Um but there's cake at one thirty.
That's right. We're gonna sober with cake. Okay, let everybody get back into place. We'll move on to the reports from county officers and the first one up is from Dirk. And that is the North Middlesex Official Plan Amendment, and this is, of course, the housekeeping amendments that he's been bringing up um up from past meetings.
Through the warden, at the risk of uh shortchanging North Middlesex, you've heard this before. Uh the province has changed the rules and in order for municipalities to use some of these new rules. We had to quickly amend the OP, so Abby and the local planner have been working through these, so. Really, um there's nothing new in this one and I am recommending approval.
Okay, thank you very much, Dirk. Any questions on this? Seeing none, then I would ask for a mover and a second or for the uh motion in front of you. Councillor Smibert. And councillor Clark. All in favor? And that's carried. Um sticking with Dirk, New uh Newberry Official Plan Amendment number fifteen.
Thank you. Through the warden. This is a sort of a technical amendment to Newberry's official plan. It's a property just west of the um. Uh hospital there, if you're familiar with the site. It was built as a house. It was converted to a dentistry office for and used for that for quite a number of years. Now, uh the applicant is seeking to change the designation to allow both commercial and residential. And they're interested in developing townhomes. And we've seen a couple of these. There's one a few meetings ago in uh Wardsville, I think. Where sort of we're seeing those forms of development in our smaller community. So that's. Uh exciting in that it does provide a different uh alternative form to simply single detached homes. Uh the report does go over at a high level, the provincial policy statement, the county's official plan and uh Newberry's official plan, and I am recommending approval.
Thank you very much, Dirk. Questions on this one? Comments? Okay, then um you've got the motion in front of you. Mover and a second or councillor DeVit and councillor Mayhew. All in favor? And that's carried. Hey, Dirk, this next one is with regards to a proposed plan of condominium in Strathroy Care Dock.
And thank you to council. This is a just over one hectare property. It it's a a good example of the redevelopment of what was one home. Uh and this proposal would create twenty-one uh units, singly detached units and a condominium plan. Um the lands are designated residential. Of course, they're within Strathroy and they're really surrounded by existing residential uses. And it would uh the development would occur on full municipal services. Um the condominium was accepted initially in February twenty twenty. It was through a a prolonged uh process. And ultimately approved or recommended for approval by Strathroy Care Dock Council in December of last year. During that time, the plan did evolve. Um in part due to uh there was some engineering, some drainage issues, and then also input uh from the neighbors. I would say generally there wasn't a fair amount of input from uh the community during that local process and issues included traffic and density and form of development. Uh fencing, et cetera. There are uh preliminary conditions, draft plan approval attached and the municipality. There are some conditions that require fencing and buffering to the satisfaction of the municipality, and that is in part to address the comments received. Um again, the report goes through the uh planning analysis. It is an urban settlement area on full municipal services and therefore is an appropriate. Uh location in my mind for uh this sort of development. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I am recommending approval.
Okay, thank you, Dirk. Questions on this application? Okay, seeing none, then you've got the motion in front of you. A mover and a second or call it uh councillor Grantham. In a secondary councillor Clark. All in favor? And that's carried. That looks like a really nice little development there. Nice little infill. And okay, and the next one, planning approval authority fee review, Dirk.
Thank you. Through the warden. Um the county, uh as you know, and we just dealt with applications, is the. Delegate of approval authority for official plans, plans as a division, condominium parlot control, et cetera. And the Planning Act does allow the county to collect fees uh for the processing of those files and. Intended to in part offset those costs or the county's costs. I think it's important to note, though, we we do uh the county has does not collect fees from local municipalities. So for instance, the um. North Middlesex Official Plan Amendment that we just dealt with, there's no fee charged of our uh local municipalities. I put a little bit of background in the plan about the planning act sections and basically it allows. Uh council to set fees um to sort of recover costs for what would be a typical application. So just to make sure we're uh still in in the appropriate area, we just took a few files and sort of ran through the number of hours and timing. Um it is hard to estimate what a a file is, and I use the words you win on some files, then you really lose on other files. So it's sort of that average one. Um but the proposed fees are summarized, uh the existing and proposed in Schedule A, I would say they're generally fairly modest. Uh increases. And then I just do a quick comparison with surrounding municipalities, in particular the city of London, just to make sure that we're not offside. Um I think we're certainly in line with other counties and in all cases, we'd be less than the city of London. Uh if that was to matter. Um so anyways, I am recommending approval and then the recommendation would be a bylaw would be brought back to a future meeting with uh Marcy.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Dirk, questions on this one? Okay, then the motion is in front of you and I would ask for a mover and a second or please councillor Rob. And councillor McMillan, all in favor? And that's carried. Hey. We're right. Oh, there he is. I was gonna say, you were sitting right in front of me a minute ago. Okay, Ryan, you're back up. Um and uh this is the Ward of Hot Mix Asphalt Painting and Cold Asphalt Recycling Contracts.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to council. Um we we just like to to quickly go over our. Our estimates and our and our budget since it is such a large amount that we we are asking for approval for. And to uh compare it against what we actually bid or what we estimated for and how they came in. Um for the hot mix, uh it came in pretty close to as estimated. It was five percent below the estimated costs. Um which ended up being approximately. Two hundred and sixty thousand plus another, so it'll take two hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars below what we estimated. Um which kind of goes in line with the way we see asphalt prices going. And then the. Uh cold in place, which we, you know, we didn't. Get quite right, uh came in approximately ten percent higher than what we thought would uh it come in this year. Um since it's not reliant on. Um a product as much as manpower, we didn't realize how much the increase would be this year. Um and on that one, we were approximately a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars under what was estimated. But between the two uh for the re uh um resurfacing projects we have, we actually came in just under budget. By about a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much, Ryan. Questions for Ryan on this? Okay, and you've got the um. Motion in front of you, um and I would ask for a mover and a second or councillor DeVit and councillor Brennan. All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to correspondence and information items. So with the payables, general payables for February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three. Totalling seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. ITS payables for February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three totaling a hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. Library payables, February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three totaling a hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. MLPs payables, February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three totaling one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Planning payables, February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three totaling nine hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Roads payables, February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three totaling eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Social service payables, February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three totaling nine hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents. Strathmere Lodge payables, February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three totaling two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Economic Development Payables, February third, twenty twenty-three to March second, twenty twenty-three totaling eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety cents. And electronic payments for January twenty twenty-three. Can I get a mover and a second or to receive those items for information, please? Councillor Rob and councillor Maguire. All in favor? And that's carried. Onto correspondence. AMO Policy Update, February ninth, twenty twenty-three. AMO Policy Update, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Board of Health Update, February twenty-three, uh twenty twenty-three. And Petition for Glendon Melbourne Intersection Visibility Improvements. Councillor Mayhew.
Uh thank you very much, Madam Warden. Um Madam Warden, in reference to nine D fourteen, I wish to acknowledge uh the numerous viewers that are watching our proceedings today from uh. Strathroy Care Dock and Southwest Middlesex. As everyone knows in the chamber, the subject of Glendon Melbourne Road Intersection is an emotional topic for many residents in these two communities and beyond. There's a large part of the southwestern end of our county that are requesting additional measures of safety devices at this intersection. This group are aware that engineering is awaiting the delivery of the most recent accident report. They also know that driver error is responsible for these accidents and they wish staff and council's consideration to mitigate. The occasional. Lack of human awareness with the addition of warning lights at this corner. I wish to thank uh Kevin Cruthers, who has led this delegation for his thoughtful and more so polite and informed communication. To our staff and members of the horseshoe. Uh many uh may be aware that Kevin is the son of the late Ian Cruthers of Southwest Middlesex. Who passed away in his term of office on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Kevin's father, councillor Cruthers, shared this passion at this intersection as well. I assure Ke- assured Kevin and his followers that we too look forward to the report. That will be coming back uh to county council and uh public opinion is always listened to. Thank you very much, Madam Warden.
Thank you for those comments, councillor Mayhew, councillor Grantham.
Yeah, thank you, uh Warden. I most certainly echo the sentiments of uh. Councillor Mayhew. The last meeting, the police chief of Strathroy Care Dock. Was here and made a presentation. It made me stop to think because we are obviously concentrating on the actions of a driver who may or may not have been paying attention, but. The comments that Chief Campbell made me think that what's being lost in all of this are those that I. Won't get the correct terminology that he used, but he more or less said those who are driving properly. And I think we've been concentrating on those that have may have been driving improperly, but. My thoughts go to the people who are the innocent victims of you will and not just those in the cars or the vehicles, but of our first responders. And I'm friends with very many of the first responders in Strathroy Care Dock and Southwest Middlesex, so. As we go through this talk and this, the petition, ask we not lose sight of those who are more or less the innocent victims in all of this. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments? Councillor Maguire?
I I won't take the time to repeat what councillor Mayhew and and councillor Grantham have said. I agree with both of them. I I respect wholly uh what our director of engineering has given to us in his reports. He is exactly accurate according to the OTRs. Uh and has done his job well. That being said, we are politicians. We are councillors of this uh county. And I believe it is incumbent upon us to start to take. A proactive approach to this intersection where so many people have been injured and killed over many decades. Uh with that, Madam Warden. At what time would it be? Appropriate to. Ask our staff. To prepare a report as to what a flashing light would look like at that intersection. And different forms of that, that this is where I am now at. I'm looking for something proactive. But I would like staff's input about that. How best to go about that?
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Maguire. I'm gonna get um our county engineer, Chris Trainee, to chime in. He is in the process of. As we know, producing a report that um he was directed to produce. I think he's bringing that back in April, but he can um. Speak to that and talk about the next steps and maybe answer your concerns directly as to how he's going to address that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden, and and through you to to I guess all the council and and to those listening. Um you're absolutely correct. The report will come back before this council to talk about uh this intersection. Uh and I just wanted to uh just take a moment to talk about, you know. Somewhat to councillor Maguire's point. You know, road safety is not solely isolated to engineering a solution. There is also enforcement is an important tool. We always hear about the sort of the pillars of road safety and there's a number of factors that involve with that. And one that often gets overlooked is education and public involvement, and that's why I was happy to see Mr. Cruthers uh well thought out uh letter come before this council. Uh and we do listen and appreciate the input of members of the public with regards to road safety. Uh across the board. You'll see a report coming from me likely again in April. To talk about reviews and revisions to our speed limits on county roads and many of those are brought forward through by um. Issues that are identified by members of the public. We simply can't be everywhere at all times, so. We do take those under serious consideration. So again, I would thank thank uh Kevin and and his group for putting this well thought out letter together. So again, I would thank, thank Kevin and, and his group for putting this well thought out letter together. Um, there are a number of things going on behind the scenes, uh, that will be brought forward in the report. I think primarily, one of the main pieces of information we haven't been provided yet is the collision report, uh, from the OPP. And of course, that will provide us, uh, some very critical information about the cause of this specific collision. Uh, and we're also doing some other things behind the scenes as well. So speaking to some other experts, uh, considering other comments besides Mr. Cruthers', uh, letter that have brought to my attention from the public, doing some historical review of the intersection and looking at other solutions. Um, you know, flashing light, of course, is, is one of the options that we have available. But there are a number of other engineering options within our toolbox that we need to look at. Uh, and we're evaluating all of those ideas. Nothing is off the table at this point. And, and I can assure you that, uh, again, as Counselor requires, says, you know, the report will be giving you my best engineering advice for an engineered solution that might have a positive effect on road safety, this intersection. Uh, and will also include all these other details that I've already spoken to, uh, recommendations from enforcement, from other engineering experts and, uh, looking at considerations that have been brought forward by the public. So, uh, I do, uh, those watching from remotely, you know, I do beg your patience on this. These things do take some time, uh, and we will have a report before council as expediently as possible once the evaluation has been complete and the full details of the collision have been received by, by my office for review. So, thank you.
You okay with that, Counselor McGuire?
Yes, I'm very confident in our director's ability to put those reports together, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further comments on, um, the petition received? Okay, then I would ask for a mover and a seconder to receive, uh, those four items. Uh, for information, please, Counselor Grantham and Counselor Clark? All in favor? And that's carried. Hey, we need a mover and a seconder to rise from the committee of the whole at two thirty two P M. Counselor Rob and Counselor Mayhew? All in favor? And that's carried. Onto bylaws, Marcy?
So we have number seven two one four, a bylaw to authorize a central emergency reporting bureau agreement with the London Police Services Board. Number seven two one five, a bylaw to appoint a representative to the Middlesex London Food Policy Council. Number seven two one six, a bylaw to authorize a service agreement with LHSC and MLPs. And number seven two one seven, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of county council on March fourteenth, twenty twenty three.
Okay, can I get a mover and a seconder to give those bylaws their first and second reading, please? Counselor Mayhew and Counselor McMillan? All in favor? And that's carried, and to give them their third and final reading? Counselor DeVet? And a seconder, Counselor Smibert? All in favor? And that's carried. Announcements in front of us, we've got two, um, upcoming. Um, so mark your calendars for Tuesday, May the second, for Middlesex Municipal Day. For our new counselors, it is a fun day that is, um, hosted by a different municipality every year. Uh, this year it will be in North Middlesex. Uh, it's morning, um, and, uh, invitation will be coming out. Um, pardon me, always they have been sent, sorry, uh, to your counselors. So, um, it goes beyond just, um, those at the county level, it goes to the local municipalities, counselors and staff. And I think you find it a very, um, it's, it's a great morning networking and learning more about the communities in our county. And then the Warden's Charity Golf Tournament is Thursday, June the twenty second, and that will be at the Fox Golf Course on Highway seven. Any other announcements? Then I would ask for a mover and a seconder to adjourn our meeting at two thirty four P M. Counselor McGuire, Counselor DeVet, all in favor? That's great. Thank you very.